Until you can't anymore, you know.
Good, yourself. Good. No good time.
Yeah, I use it up. Hold it on here, I'll go get the phone. You're not gonna use it?
No.
Okay.
No. It was sitting in front of me ago.
Okay, but I have.
This is the time of year.
Look at something that I didn't print out.
No, that's right around June twenty-second, June twenty-first. First day of summer.
First day of summer.
I worked with somebody who went to a work conference at that time, and they had like a golf tournament at three o'clock. Yeah, they scheduled stuff all day, all night.
All day, all night, because they could.
Yep. Yeah, it's twenty, it's twenty-three hours of sunlight. Not right now, but around summer solstice time.
Yeah, I don't know what's.
I'm sure it'd be fun, but it'd drive me crazy. December twenty-first, it's twenty-three hours of dark.
Yeah, I would, I'd go crazy.
Yeah, I could take the light, I cannot take the dark.
Oh, same, have a little?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Happy birthday to the United States of America, and to the Republican Party's standers. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody mic'd up? Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the consent calendar?
So move.
Motion, do it a second.
A second.
Do you recall, commissioners, pickers, five, Carlson.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Mayor Armstrong.
Hi.
Okay, and next on the agenda, we have visitors to be heard. And, um, a member of the public can speak on any item that is not on the agenda. And you have five minutes. When you come to the podium, say your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor. Chad Skiles, H2 North Dakota Street here in Canton. Two weeks ago, an incident occurred up at Kennedy Park at this swimming pool that involved a city commissioner. And several people contacted me, asking my opinion on it, a lot of concerns, and so forth. So I basically told them, I said, you need to go through the appropriate channels, come speak before the next city commission meeting. If you want, contact City Hall, et cetera. And it has to do with what I feel is an abuse of power by the city commissioner. And I have been up here several times over the last few years discussing ethics. And that runs very deep with me. And as an elected official, I feel that you should be held to a higher standard. And to take your position as an elected official and use it for personal gain, to me is unacceptable, frankly, unacceptable. In talking with the several different people that I spoke with, that I agreed to keep their identities out of the public eye for their, for their requests. All of their stories match. And so it's, it can only, I can only come to one conclusion. And I certainly hope that every elected official sitting here takes this to heart, thinks about this before they speak, and use their position for personal gain. I'm not sure what the reason was behind it. But, like I said, I have called out commissioners in the past for ethical conundrums and issues. And I'm going to call out Commissioner Piggers, because you are the one that I am talking to and referencing tonight. And I certainly hope that something like this never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward and speak?
Hello, Commissioner, I'm Jesse Wentz, I'm one of the lifeguards at the Canton Pool. I was there the morning that this incident happened. I was the one that talked to her, and I said, I'm sorry, we do not allow people in there. It was said, they were a commissioner, you know, I kind of felt that as like an inappropriate use of power. I saw it as them being a hired person, you know, I didn't want to be going against what they had to say. I just saw it as very, very, just out of the ordinary, it shouldn't have been done. Other parents that had their kids there, for some of us, were fine without being like in the area of the pool. But she kind of said like, hey, I'm part of the commission, I can get that changed if that's not allowed. And so I just kind of left it at that. I didn't want to push anything, you know, but, yeah.
Jesse, can I ask you one question?
Yes.
I said, was Andy McCann already in the pool area with his son that you gave lessons to?
He was dropping his son off in the pool, and then he went in, and then he stayed in there, in that area.
Okay, but he was already in there before I walked in?
Yes, he was dropping his son off in the pool, which we do allow. We just, I told you that we do not allow people to stay in the pool, and then, yes.
Well, actually, you said for private lessons we do, is what your exact words were to me.
Uh, no, I believe that I said that we do not allow parents in the pool for any lessons.
Yeah, oh, you said you do for private lessons.
Point of order, Mayor.
Pardon?
Point of order.
This is a, this is used to be heard, so they're allowed to speak their piece later. Good. Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else like to come forward tonight, for visitors to be heard? And that will move forward. And we have an old business, we have the turf.
We, we've read three quotes for turf. One local in Canton, one Sioux Falls, and one just across the border in Iowa. City staff have obtained two of the quotes, and ISG have obtained a third. So we asked ISG to compare the three, to make sure we're actually doing apples to apples on what was included in the quotes. And you can see from their comparison that the local Canton quote was considered to be the best one.
And we don't have to make the decision on any of this with the big focus, right?
Yeah, it's, you know, the pool closes this week, but it's a, it's a off-season project, and we'll have a couple more months, if not more of weather that we can work with to install.
Oh, okay. Right, so we have this chart we can study and go from there?
Yeah, I did, I did read through it, and I agree that even though the curb appeal was a little more expensive than the original Thornton flooring, I thought curb appeal had a lot more in their quote, you know, the rods, the edging, the, you know, all of the other things that would actually make it look nicer, rather than just throwing down some turf and gluing it down the coned date, so. I did appreciate the way they broke it down, and then added in those touches that would really make it look nicer.
Yeah.
So, you know, when you, I mean.
I mean, if you, you want us to do any additional research, grab any other quotes?
I don't, well, no, we've been looking for quotes for a couple months now, so, and this is what we got, so.
Well, best way that prices are valid for thirty days. So even though we have done, how long are we gonna hold these folks on?
Well, that's true.
On the wringer for a quote?
That's true.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they'll usually work with us, I understand. But yeah, there's, there's a chance they could say, not with me, especially some of their materials actually went up.
I would feel comfortable making motion to approve the curb appeal landscapes estimate and move forward.
Okay.
I'll do a second there.
All right. One focal.
Commissioners, Carlson.
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Pickers.
Hi.
Mayor Armstrong.
Hi. Thanks. So, new business. We have a rezone hearing for two hundred forty Northwest Road, and I will be holding that now. This is the time and place for a hearing on the proposed rezone for the property by Fair Trade Properties located at two hundred forty Northwest Road. The hearing is now open. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public comments on the request to rezone the property located at two hundred forty Northwest Road from general business to light industrial. If any member of the city commission has conflict with, and interest with this issue, they should abstain and abstain from participation in this hearing. Anyone? Okay. Um, the Fair Trade Properties is requesting a rezone of this property from general business to light industrial. And are you a representative of Fair Trade?
I sure am, yeah.
Okay, you could speak on the issue if you would like to.
I was, I thought you guys might have questions for me or something, but they might. Okay, perfect.
Do you have any questions to ask?
Well, I don't know who you are, so tell me, tell me about who you are and what you have.
All right, my name is Kyle Walner, the blue shirt there, that's Caleb, we're business partners. Um, we basically manufacture pallets, crates, wood shipping products like that, you know. Just kind of, you know, we got our, got a lot out there, and we're looking at maybe doing an expansion to our building in the next year or two here probably. Just thought maybe the zoning could do something like the title before we include that.
This was heard at P&amp;Z, there's no negative feedback from the public at that, or, or City Hall while it's been advertised.
Okay. Are there any proponents to this issue? Are there any opponents to this issue? Do you have any other questions for this gentleman?
Bear with us in the, I said, bear with us in the construction out there.
Yeah, right, yeah, I'll have a conversation with some woman about that one of these days here too, about access and all this. Across the bridge, so.
Sure.
All good then?
Hearing nothing further, the public hearing is now closed.
All right, thank you.
And I would entertain a motion for a first reading of this rezon. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Um, can I also make a statement that we just need to revise the legal description, it was missing some information on the legal description?
You did that already, right?
Yeah. Okay, I guess I didn't see it yet, but, perfect.
Okay, this is regarding ordinance ninety-seven point zero four relating to five oh six East Second Street property. Andrew?
This came to the city's attention about a week and a half ago, and the situation's changed a little bit, but still, I thought, required your attention. When the situation first came to city's attention, there was a, an overhanging branch from five oh six to five twenty-two, but that branch has since been addressed by being removed. However, there's still a tree at five oh six that appears to be not necessarily diseased or dead, but it's forming in such a way that it's catching the wind and splitting, and poses a risk, not just to five oh six, but also to a property to the north, depending on which way it would may fall. The ordinance in question says the city commission may declare that a tree be removed if it's a danger to life-limber property. Other, how that differs from other ordinances that we have is that other nuisances, it's, it says that the finance officer or code enforcement or the police department will be the act on behalf of the city commission. But on this ordinance, it doesn't say any such thing, it says the city commission shall declare. If you were to declare a tree a danger to life-limber property, then the property owner would have a reasonable amount of time to address it himself, or then you would go in and address it and send the bill back to the property owner.
So. Would you like to discuss anything? Any questions for Andrew?
Well, the ordinance says where on situated any dead tree or, or overhanging branches dangerous to life-limber property, but we said the tree is not dead?
It's, no, it's not dead, and I don't know if disease in the tree world would mean something other than just if disease could refer to just bad formation of the tree, or if it always refers to a disease.
Because even ninety-seven point oh nine nuisance tree also says dead.
It's clear with the ordinance is the overhanging branch portion. The fall zone of the tree certainly would make it cross property lines, but today, there's a particular overhange attached to the tree at the moment that is the issue, it's not, it's the tree itself. So, the ordinance does not necessarily match fully what we got going on.
Can we ask the city attorney to come up and kind of give us some information?
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Sam Nelson here, I'm the city attorney when my dad's not around, which is today. So don't worry, we talked this over before he let me loose on here. Ordinance we're talking about, ninety-seven point zero four. I think it's, it's, the tree either could or could not fit into this, and my understanding is that there's been an assessment done by an arborist, but ninety-seven oh four says dead trees or overhanging branches dangerous to life-limber property. I think what the ordinance is attempting to capture is dangerous trees, whether they're dead, dying, or whether we've got limbs that are a potential risk. And I, I say that, I reviewed essentially chapter ninety-seven prior to this evening. If you look at ninety-seven oh nine, you've got dead disease or infected or woody plants shall be declared dangerous. So if you've got any of those things in ninety-seven oh nine, I believe the commission's got to say, okay, we know that you've got this type of situation, this is a nuisance. I think ninety-seven point zero four is a bit broader, because you have to look at not necessarily whether the tree is dead or damaged or infested, but whether or not its structure, I'm not an arborist, but its structure poses a risk. And if it's structured, the way it's set up, situated on the property with relation to people or other property is, is dangerous, then the commission declares it as such. Notice, under that ordinance, we would, we would notice the property owner, give him some time to get that corrected. And if they didn't, much like you'd be able to mitigate my grass if it was four or five feet tall, you would just be able to go in and mitigate that and then assess the cost back to the property. Do you have any answer, any more questions, if you have?
The arborists chose for the third-party certified arborist in the state of South Dakota and International Society of Agriculture. Do not think it was me myself, it was somebody outside.
So recently, someone has declared it?
Yeah, yeah, this last week.
Can I bring this up there?
Yes.
This is the arborist assessment, this is his credentials. I thought you guys all had that. Was this declared dangerous last week or previously?
Friday, last Friday, before.
Before the limb.
But the limb, it's still, it's the portion of the tree, don't do that.
Sorry, I thought you guys had all this. This is the tree now, now it is half a tree, after my tree of limbs been removed. So those are the pictures right now.
So in May of twenty-three, we, you guys, I'd probably abstained. The city shall have the authority to regulate and control nuisance trees and other woody plants upon the private property only when an action is demonstrably demonstrably necessary for public safety or to prevent the spread of disease or insects to public trees in places. So, what the certified arborist made very clear to me was that he has been watching our, our meetings, and he's saying that we have instituted this ordinance against the ash for multiple times, and we are failing to follow up with our deadline. And if this had been an ash tree that failed, the city of Canton would be liable. Because we instituted an ordinance and then did not hold it, so citizen A and B, they would come after the city and say, you guys didn't hold up your ordinance, so that's, that's ninety-seven zero four.
Excuse me, Mayor, Richard LaFave, owner of the property. Well, first of all, good evening. There's a lot more to this story, quite a bit more that the board should be really aware of. Uh, before addressing this tree matter, I most respectfully ask that Chris York recuse himself for any other comments moving forward on this particular matter.
Point of order. I, I'm just curious, if, if, you said that you're the owner of the property?
Yes. My name is Richard LaFave, I live in five oh six East Second Street. And you're gonna find out why you asked that here in a second. So, Mr. York is not only a board member, but the owner of Arrow Tree Services, the very company that profited from removing the limb in question, which started this whole conversation. This is a clear conflict of interest. A year ago, in a tree health report that I commissioned from Chris Ford before buying the property, he quoted eight hundred to a thousand dollars for the removal. Just recently, he removed it for nearly five thousand, the same limb. In that same report, he cited that the tree did not pose a threat and did not even yield resolution. I'm happy to provide that report via email after this meeting. Furthermore, Terry Swanson now owes him an additional five thousand dollars because she is on a payment plan with Chris for other tree services. Mr. Swanson has a documented history of community intimidation, as well as scrupulous remarks about what and what not to do with trees. And I ask that he remove himself from this discussion moving forward.
Who is he, Mr. Swanson?
Sorry, not Mr. Swanson, excuse me, Mr. York, my apologies, Mr. York, sorry, Mr. Swanson.
Can you do that?
What's up, Mr. York, to determine?
Yeah, you're wanting me to do what?
To remove yourself from this discussion, because you have invested interest, not just financially, but you also trespassed my property last Friday to remove this tree after I asked you not to.
You asked him not to remove, be on your property when he removed the branch from their garage?
Well, he went on my property.
I went, I, can I say something?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Wait a minute.
Hey, hang on, hang on.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I apologize for interrupting, but.
Please do.
I'm an officer of the city, as the sworn city attorney, here's what's gonna happen going forward. The mayor's gonna control the discussion, the mayor's gonna recognize people to speak. Maybe you can ask the mayor if you can be heard, but this is not a public input, this is a council-controlled section of discussion. I know the mayor will do a great job of making sure everybody gets a chance to say something. With respect to Mr. York's recusal, that is a decision for him to make, whether or not he needs to vote, or et cetera, whatever. This is a public meeting, everybody gets a chance to be here until they start getting wild and crazy, and then they get to leave. Either on their own accord, or we call the cops, you're interrupting a public meeting. I know we're not gonna get there this evening, so with that, Mayor, apologize for my interruption.
Thank you for interrupting, and we will speak one at a time, you tell your piece, others will be able to tell that piece. And Chris, you already told me that you are abstaining from voting. Voting.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you, sir. Um, I do have this trespassing in conversation on video, if the city would like to see that as well. I want to acknowledge this has been a difficult matter, but I've always sought resolution with the Swansons. I even offered twice to share the cost of the removal, both times she refused. My homeowner's insurance deductible is twenty-five hundred, yet my insurer's legal team affirmed, under South Dakota codified law forty-three dash sixteen dash three, once the limb naturally fell, became the Swanson's property and her responsibility to remove. I know that's gray, I don't like it, but that's what they said. As noted in the police report, the Swanson contacted her own homeowner's insurance and confirmed the same, removal was her responsibility. What she's trying to do is backdate the tree as a nuisance so that she can further stand up, as she's suing now, for six thousand dollars for the tree removal that she did last week. When, during a discussion, furthermore, she told me that because I drive a hundred and fifty thousand dollar car, I should be the one to pay, not her. Ms. Swanson's entire foundation for demanding the tree's removal rests on her effort to now deem the tree unhealthy, shifting all liability to me. Yet even in Mr. York's tree report just one year ago, he never cited the tree as unhealthy, diseased, or hazardous. To this day, the city of Canton hasn't issued any such notice. Instead of cooperating, the Swanson has progressively escalated to this moment. She called the police to question me about my plans, though no officer cited any law had violated. She called the police to question me about my plans, though no officer cited any law had violated. This was not about enforcement, but pressure and abuse of influence and misuse of city resources. Again, last Friday, she retained a lawyer to sue me for the minimum removal costs, around $6,000, nearly $5,000 of which is billed to Mr. Chris York here. I engaged counsel already to uphold the laws that clearly protect my position, positions that her insurance, my insurance, and the state of South Dakota stands by. This entire situation is now entered into legal proceedings. I ask complaining if the roles were reversed. Would Ms. Swanson pay out of pocket against her insurance? I firmly believe she would. As we know, the laws have been discussed here. I really don't need to go further into them, but regarding 93.6 on the Canton ordinances, the tree's never been declared dead, diseased, or hazardous. Mr. York's own reporting last year confirmed this. The city has issued no notice to the contrary, therefore no nuisance exists even today. Regarding 2110-1, no arborist beyond Mr. York's shifting opinions has declared the tree dangerous or obstructive until I just made, was made aware of that report. And I would further question that report because Ms. Swanson decided him as a friend. The situation isn't about neighborly disagreements or small-town influence. It's about whether the laws upheld equally, or whether personal relationships, intimidation, and financial bias are allowed to distort justice. From the beginning, I acted with patience and responsibility. I sought professional assessments, engaged my homeowner's insurance, and relied on South Dakota law and the city of Canton ordinances. I did not trespass or manipulate. I followed the process, a process unacceptable to Mrs. Swanson, which is why we're here today. What we must not do tonight is let emotion, friendship, or financial comparisons win the rival. Someone can evade responsibility simply by refusing to spend their money or by influencing others that no property owner in Canton is secure. Ms. Swanson's refusal to meet her obligations, her use of police intimidation, her reliance on personal influence have turned a private issue to a public concern. The question before us is clear. Do we honor the ordinances and statutes that govern us, or do we let influence dictate outcomes? The tree in question has never been designated dangerous. The law defines responsibility clearly. I have followed every channel available. On what grounds, then, do liability be shifted? Fairness demands consistency and courage to apply the law even when it's unpopular. The strength of Canton lies not in its influence, but the equal application of law. To preserve that fairness, I urge any further evaluations on the tree to be conducted by independent arborists from outside of Canton with at least two professional assessments. Mr. Chris York must not be involved or notified as his conduct, gossiping, sharing private reports, manipulating prices, and profiting from this matter compromises impartiality beyond the law. I'm not here to win my neighbor's expense, to win at my neighbor's expense. I'm here as a homeowner, husband, stepfather, taxpayer, who believes in fairness and accountability. And why can't it be a place where we, shall our children grow up knowing that the law is applied equally, no matter who you are or how long you've lived here? So I leave you with this. I'm not asking for special treatment, only for lawful treatment, the same fairness every citizen reserves. Anything less sets a precedent that harms not just me, but every resident in the city. I trust this commission will rise above personalities and pressures and stand firmly for law, fairness, and justice. Do you have any questions?
Anybody, do you have any questions?
You said you didn't, this report that Chris has provided to us is not a report that you've received?
I'm not sure which report that is. Can you, do you have a date?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
The report that we were just provided from.
That states that you, something about a Cobra system to allow for no branch removal.
So that is some of the language. But I purchased this report from Chris a year ago before purchasing the house. Only three people had it, my realtor, Chris, and me. So Chris has said he didn't share that report with Terry, but there's no way Terry didn't get, got it from anybody else. So I can send that report to the city's email after this meeting, where it clearly says the tree is not dangerous.
It clearly says the tree is not dangerous. It literally says the tree is.
I don't, you already promised yourself. If you'd like to speak, I can.
You don't get to tell them, no.
I said, I'm going to speak, I'm not going to hope. But I'm going to support myself. I apologize. Correct.
I have a question. You said that it costs $6,000 to remove a branch. One branch?
In charge.
There are pictures of, I don't know if you have the police report, Mayor, but there are pictures of a branch. It's, it's considered a branch, but it's a tree.
Can I view the video of the tree removal?
It's a gigantic branch.
Just a reminder, we aren't talking about the branch, though. It's done. The tree is, we're supposed to be discussing the remaining tree. From this report. Yes.
The reason I brought up them is they're trying to get that tree diagnosed the way that they hoped so, to get it back in, shifting my goals.
I understand that that's your concern.
Okay.
Just to read out loud for everybody. Sam Pizar, Registered Consulting Arborist, number 705, ISA 4 Certified Master Arborist. Likelihood of upper canopy failure. This would be the likelihood of branches, trunks, or parts of the tree. The likelihood of failure is imminent as described above. The likelihood of impacting a target is medium. This equates to a likelihood of likely. When combined with the risk rating matrix, a likelihood of likely with significant consequences or risk rating of high is given. This appears to the tree as it is today for the next year.
I have a question regarding that statement. I have not once allowed that person on my property to get up into that tree and evaluate the tree to the extent it's described there.
As an ISA certified arborist, he looks at that from the ground. He can use a crime if he'd like, and he goes all the way around the tree and diagnoses it with. He does not climb the tree to tell you it's dangerous.
I would further ask, given the relationship of that person and the Swansons, that another report be generated from a source that is.
From a board master certified arborist?
John Ball.
John Ball. You've got John Ball and Sam Pizar. That master designation. The board master certified arborist, that's why Sam is who he is. He does not cut, he's not trimmed, he does not prune. He literally consults. That's his job.
I don't think that's something the city is going to pay for.
No.
I am happy to, and I've already generated two other arborists to come out to evaluate the tree.
Licensed arborists or certified arborists?
I guess I'll have to find that out.
Correct.
Regardless, I've reached out to get other opinions, and I do think it's worth it before the commission makes their judgment on this tree. Please keep in mind, this is a rather large tree, and I would be surprised if this tree was deemed to come down. Why wouldn't any other tree this size or of that species be asked to come down in the city of Canton? There's many other trees like this, and if mine's going to come down? I hope that you get every other person in the city to notice that tree coming down there, York, too.
I mean, I have a tree that, when the Durachio came through, a good half of it, literally half of it, came down, tore apart, came off the tree. And we removed that portion, the other part still stands, and it's a perfectly acceptable, fine, sturdy tree. So I'm not of the opinion that every tree that has a branch that falls down needs to come down.
I agree with you.
But I do agree that when that part came down, we went up and we took down other portions that had cracked and pulled that would be considered dangerous, trimmed back the tree branches. So I mean, is this something that you're prepared to do, knowing that there's maybe some issues up there?
I fully anticipate that that's going to be the outcome of this, that it needs trimming to be safe, just like every other tree. Chris has done work for us for years, and he is, I have another property here in Canton, and that tree, those trees are so safe now because of his good work. I imagine that the work that needs to do with this tree would be safe. But I do think other meanings are needed, and I do think that there is skepticism in this town that needs to be avoided to get a full assessment of what's here. Any other questions?
I would definitely not. Sorry, can you have a chair?
Hello, Commission. My name is Parker Swanson. I am the son of Phil and Terry, the neighbors. The situation began when a tree limb located on my parents' property fell onto her roof during a storm that took place on July 28, 2025. It's important to note that the neighbor had this property professionally assessed within the last year, and it was documented that this particular limb posed a risk and needed to be removed. Despite being made aware of this hazard, he chose not to act. His inaction directly resulted in the limb to inevitably fall under my parents' roof. Rather than taking responsibility, the neighbor refused.
I'm sorry. We've already decided the limb has nothing to do with any of this, so if you can move past the limb to where this current standing tree is.
Okay.
The tree itself is, the tree itself is, stands is the issue.
I thought everybody had a chance to speak about it and tell their side.
They did, so I'm going to allow this.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, but I'm going to talk though. Rather than taking responsibility, the neighbor refused to assist in resolving the issue and insisted that my parents' insurance cover the damage. This created unnecessary conflict and left my parents the victim of his negligence, with both the damage and the burden of addressing it. Although the damage to the roof ended up being minimal, it could have been much worse and caused serious harm to someone. Ultimately, after much back and forth, I was forced to get the removal taken care of on August 14, so that her home or someone would not suffer further harm. I'm very thankful for those who stepped in to help resolve this matter. There's a clear distinction between what the neighbor claims as lawful and what is right. Where he may argue that insurance policies can technically be used to cover such damage, the greater truth is that he had prior knowledge of this dangerous condition of his tree and neglected his duty to address it. Doing the right things means taking responsibility for hazards on one's own property, especially when warned in advance of the risk. Instead, he shifted the burden onto my parents, who did nothing wrong, and were left to clean up the consequences of his negligence. This case is not simply about insurance coverage, it's about accountability, fairness, and neighborly responsibility. My parents, nor should anyone else, be penalized for another's failure to act when danger was known, preventable, and avoidable. I am sharing this story because I can see how this situation could happen to someone else in the future. If you drive around town, you'll notice a lot of trees that aren't being properly maintained. We still have nuisance trees that have not been addressed. I believe the city made an ordinance to have these removed. The time has passed, and now is time to take responsibility and do something about it. Nuisance trees do not just include ash wood. There are dead pine everywhere, as well as damaged trees from previous storms that have not been taken care of. There needs to be a better way of handling this before we wait for something bad to happen to someone. I was driving home today on Park Lane, and there's a branch, I don't know how it's even up still. It's hanging over the road, and I don't know how long it's been there. I understand this is, I kind of turned it into a personal matter between neighbors, and it sucks that it's like that, because from what I understand, there was a good relationship there beforehand, and there might not be anymore. But I'm not going to sit here and listen to someone say that we use our influence, or someone has influence to gain traction from the city. That's ridiculous. I think certain people are worried about their character being demeaned, but character is how you handle situations. And you don't let someone's, you know, what happens if a kid, is it a big deal? It doesn't matter until someone's garage has a hole in it, or it falls on a kid. I mean, it's kind of laughable to say it's, or coercing the city. I mean, it's silly. For the record, I walked over to his property to move, I don't know how much this pot costs, but we're lower in this tree, so I went over there to move this container that he had so it wouldn't break it. And not once, I mean, he videotaped and watched the whole thing. To have your tree removed from your tree and not offer to help is also laughable. So the only reason I trespassed over in his land is to help him out. So if you think that trespassing, I apologize, but I did it to help that, so I didn't break your pot.
Who the hell is paying good intentions?
Yeah, well.
We're done. Do you have anything, Corbin?
Nope, I, we documented everything in the police report, and then we counseled with the city attorney. It was initially stated that it was going to be a civil matter. Obviously, we have one half stating that they have proof that they have a diseased tree prior to what happened, and the other half is saying that's not, it's not true. I mean, that's all done with civil. Obviously, whatever the city attorney goes with, that's what we start with.
I would believe civil.
Sandy, can I speak?
Sure, briefly, let's move on with this. We're here to see if we uphold our ordinance, to see if it's, to see if it's a tree that's not diseased but maybe cracked, been struck by lightning.
It was struck by lightning last year.
Damaged in any way. Is there a worry that it's going to fall and hit somebody else's property? Or is it stable enough? Not sure if we want to wait to get licensed or certified arborist in here. I mean, how likely?
That's what he has the city of. With a master arborist.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I've been up here rereading 97.04, and as you know, you know, the plain language of the ordinance. So I'm reading it to say, require the owner of any premises where on a situated any dead or overhanging branches to remove the same. So an overhanging branch, I wouldn't consider if you were to say there are some overhanging branches, therefore the tree must come down. So don't think the word "to remove the same" means the whole tree must come down. So if we, as Bridget says, it sounds like there's maybe a portion that does need to come down to make it a safe tree, is that something that we could declare? Or does it need to be a declaration of entire removal? What are your thoughts?
I think that comes down to, Sam's already provided that in his assessment, as he said. You don't want to put on the city attorney, you want to put on the master arborist.
I'm asking what Sam thinks the ordinance says.
Yeah, I think that, I think if, if it's my home at 320 North Milwaukee, which, fun fact for all of you that are not good at addresses, it's kitty corner from this hotspot we're talking about. If there's a branch from my property that hangs over the neighbor's roof, and it's declared dangerous by a certified arborist or someone who's got expertise in this, I would say the ordinance would provide both the authority and the leeway for the city to determine just that particular limb needs to be removed, vice the entire tree. I would defer to somebody with more expertise on that than me, but I don't think it's an all or nothing. Any other questions?
Yes, it does, thank you.
To go along with that, I think that if we have a third-party arborist who says that, hey, this portion of the tree needs to be removed, then he has to come back. We have to make that an order, right? He has to come back and make sure that that part didn't get removed, and we didn't just do half or whatever that needed to be done.
Follow up with the suggested pruning to be done.
So did this gentleman, Sam, see the tree before or after the branch removal? Before, before the branch removal. Correct. So that's when he labeled it imminent. And she actually asked that I get there previous, prior to me actually getting there. She wanted me there like the next day, which Sam did too. Sam wanted me there on Saturday, and I said, can't, can't do it. I literally can't do it.
Excuse me, Mayor. I have a question about that report. I have a question about that arborist report. What is the date of that arborist report?
August 8.
Okay, so that is in fact.
I can't hear you.
Yes, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with proceedings. August 8 is in fact after the tree. August eighth is in fact after the tree limb fell.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We're aware.
Before we removed it.
But if, yeah, after it fell before it got removed from the garage.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we can certainly have Mr. Swanson come back, take another look at the tree as it still stands, and.
Mr. Kesar.
Sorry, Kesar. All sorts of names get mixed up, but Canton is one of the few cities that employs a certified arborist, an ISA certified arborist, and employ our own. So we can interject our own second opinion.
You don't, you don't employ a certified ISA certified arborist. You employ a South Dakota certified arborist.
He went and got his ISA after South Dakota stopped.
Can't resign.
After, um, after South Dakota stopped doing its, its own arborist program, and it combined with North Dakota, he went and obtained his ISA certified arborist. So we actually, I don't know, not a master, but, uh, he got his certification by attending classes taught by Sam Kesar.
Richard, is this someone that you would allow on your property to assess the tree?
In fact, with planning and reaching out to me to talk about coming on the property, yes, yes, ma'am.
It's three hundred and twenty-five dollars, just so you know. I paid that just because I was worried about it falling on Mark's yard.
To be clear, when the city suspects there's a nuisance, we don't need permission.
And that's the only reason cops showed up in the matter of this, is, is he would let people on his property.
Move on here. Um, so should we, do we just?
Table.
Table it because we'll declare Jason, is it? Jason, you go.
We'll, we'll find someone else to do it, just so we aren't relying on our own staff opinion. Uh, even though it's a very, very well-educated staff opinion, we'll still, uh, whether it's Kesar or someone else, we'll get another one. I just, like I said, I wanted to bring this in front of you because I didn't feel like it was something that staff could do on its own because of the way the ordinance is written. Yeah.
And this person should be aware. We're just talking about the tree that still stands as it stands, and no other issues that have happened previous to what the tree looks like.
Or any cost, because that's a civil matter.
Right, or any cost that has occurred to any party that's nothing to do with the city, but as the tree stands as it is.
Yep, and I'd like the opinion of the arborist to just clarify with you now on the ask for options, multiple options, on how to address whatever concerns they might have, whether that's, you know, full removal or, you know, just any answer where.
Okay, so I want to table this issue.
Before we table, can I speak for myself, or are you moving on?
You want to speak for yourself?
I'd like to, I'd like to address my name being brought up in this. Yes, please. I wasn't gonna vote, but I'd like.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. So to date us back to the beginning of this, um, hold on a little here. Uh, eight, seven, twenty twenty-four, so August seventh, twenty twenty-four, I provided a tree risk assessment for Red Door Realty on behalf of Richard Lefebvre at five oh six East Second. The tree risk assessment is a hundred dollars from a licensed arborist, not a certified arborist. I'm a licensed arborist. I provided multiple tree risk assessments. I think they're a great option for folks that are purchasing homes, uh, something that you have done if you're looking at your roof or, uh, other issues that looked at with your home inspection. It's great to look at your trees and that sort of thing. So Richard did a great thing. He reached out and said, hey, Chris, do you walk my tree? So I did, and I provided this. All shade trees on property are of mature age and expected health with the age of the trees. Every tree with the exception of the large common hackberry in the northeast corner of the property, photo attached, are in good, great structure with no concerns at this time. With that being said, the common hackberry, as shown, has a large split in the upper canopy that would need to be addressed in my professional observations with two options for mitigation. One, install a dynamic Cobra system to allow for no branch removal and compartmentalization of the splitting that will take place. I appraise that at six hundred to eight hundred dollars. Removal of the lead to the north back to the main stem, which is the one that failed, resulting in a significant loss to the upper crown of the canopy, and I appraise that from eight hundred to a thousand dollars. Lower in the canopy, this particular specimen has included bark and stress, photo attached, but coated, compartmentalization of dead, of decaying trees has taken place through the last twenty years, allowing for strong cells in hardwood. This tree has also been struck by lightning in the past. This has since compartmentalized as well. Aero Tree Care LLC previously climbed this specimen about eight, nine years ago, addressing dead wood over the backyard. Remaining trees on this property have moderate drought stress, minor storm damage. There's no ash on the property, and there's no Scotch pine on the property. There are two photos attached. I've sent that to you. And on nine fifteen, twenty twenty-four, Richard Lefebvre paid online for a hundred and six dollars and twenty cents. Then we speed forward to just about a month ago, I was in Paul Wong's backyard, I'm sorry.
What?
Mark Wong, oh, child, this, some, Mark Wong's backyard with my partner of Spring Creek Timber Works, and we were removing an ash tree in the backyard, and I was setting his rope, and he said, "York, you gotta see this hackberry tree," and I said, "We're not looking at that hackberry tree. Don't worry about that hackberry tree. Please don't look at that hackberry tree. Focus on this ash tree." And at that time, Richard happened to hear us, and he walked over the fence, and he stood at the fence, and he looked at me and said, "What are you guys doing? Do you want, um, are you bringing that ash tree down? I'll take some of the firewood." I said, "If I get a chance, I'll bring you some firewood." So at that time, I removed the ash tree, took it out to the front yard and placed the, the firewood in his yard. He was happy. Everything was all good. Storm comes through three weeks later and puts the tree on Terry's roof. I was stuck in Sioux Falls for ten days, literally doing one neighborhood in Sioux Falls. I finally get a chance to look at this tree.